And hopefully, I said 3,538 as opposed to 145. So I didn't want to shortchange them and it would have been great because 145 patron visits, yet we had 5,300 materials checked out. So that's, you know, that would have been a pretty good ratio.
Yeah, I like the rate.
All right. Any other suggestions, corrections? All those in favor? Unanimous? Under new business, we have a consideration of planning board bylaws amendment. Danielle Loring is going to bring us up to speed on that. I'm right here. Do you want to sit and do it?
Just speak loud.
So recently, the planning board revised their bylaws to address some changes that were made in the ordinances. And because the changes were more policy in nature, they didn't want to, they couldn't be in the ordinances, so they made them as part of their bylaws. And those are, recently, the board moved some of their authority to staff or the review authority, which includes staff and contractors. And these include backlot driveways, minor site plan review, and staff reviews. So the reason why they wanted to codify the fact that the staff would then still have to bring the, their approvals to them is so that they could still have some input and notes therefore. So even though they were relinquishing some of their duties, they were still allowing for there to be some sort of hierarchy in terms of review and approval. So basically, there is a courtesy, they're sending it to the Board of Selectmen for you folks to review them and approve them before they formally motion to accept them.
Is that one section in blue the only change?
That's correct. It's just to codify the, yep.
Other questions about this?
Well, first of all, just a couple of grammar things. The minimus is D-E, the minimus. And/or should have a slash in between just for grammar purposes. I'll turn my grammarian over here. But why is it coming here?
It's coming here for informational purposes only.
Right. It's their bylaws.
You don't need to pass on it.
Right.
They want you to be aware of it.
Right. The town attorney recommended that any bylaw changes be run through the Board of Selectmen because you are the, you know, appointing authority. So therefore, you know, just to kind of solidify the process.
There's no reason to take a vote on it.
No.
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 Other questions for Danielle or procedurally? This paragraph is a mouthful. I'm guessing that a lawyer wrote this?
Yes.
Because it is a mouthful.
Yes, it has been run through our town attorney.
So I think you should make the changes, Joe pointed out. Anything else? Thank you, Danielle.
Yeah, no problem.
Reform.
Yeah, there's only two periods in that whole paragraph.
Exactly.
I will say that, you know, some of the ordinances read the same way, though. They're hard to understand as well. So it's a little interpretation.
They want us to call them.
Next item of business is unfinished business. And the first one is consideration of the Raymond Village Library Memorandum of Understanding. I originally brought this forward to the board after listening to the board talk about this. Dawn has history with this, as we learned back when we brought this during the winter. What this board asked is that the agreement or the memorandum of understanding, which was originally presented to the board, be converted to an actual agreement. So our attorney did that. And then, you know, we kind of went back and forth with the library and the board with that agreement. Then they actually had a board member, Benjamin Crowder, who is a lawyer, take a look at it for them. In its final form, before they sent it back to us, they made a couple of minor changes, which are highlighted in today's information in your packet. And so we are basically bringing this back to the board in the form that the board requested it. It would allow us, especially in the, in the part of the budget where we do maintenance, if maintenance costs money versus just being routine, that it is now spelled out as a budget item and was approved at town meeting. So that came out of our discussion this winter and made that more official. But basically, what this does, and when I reread it again, is it allows us to help them administratively, as long as it does not cost the town money. And what we can offer them makes sense to them. Neither of us has to do it, but it does allow us now to process payroll or do bulk purchasing and things of that nature for them if it makes sense for both parties. And it kind of formalizes the informal relationship we've had for a long time. So if somebody from the library would like to get up and speak to what process you've done since it's been in front of the board, or if you're ready for us just to talk about it, I mean, it's, I know you're here, so.
Denise Gifford, 546 Webb's Road. I believe that we have gone through the process of reviewing what your attorney sent back to our Board of Trustees and are ready at this point to present it in the form as it stands at this point for your consideration. If there's any questions I think that I can answer, I'd be glad to. Of course, legal questions, we would have to refer to Ben Crowder.
Great. Dawn, do you want to add anything? You're Ben, the driving force from the town standpoint on this.
I think you said it all. And you said it formalizes, I would say codifies, formalizes the relationship that we've had for a number of years. It does open up a few new opportunities for us to cooperate with the Raymond Village Library to our benefit, hopefully our mutual benefit. And so we can provide some services and some assistance to them perhaps more efficiently than they can provide through other means. So that's a bit of a change. But mostly, it's just a putting down on paper what we've been doing for a long, long time. And we want to be supportive and helpful to the library. And so this would just be a written document that certifies that relationship.
Joe?
The way this is written, though, you have to appropriate these funds at town meeting, which wasn't done this past town meeting.
Yes, it was. $500.
It was.
Done for maintenance. So we can only spend this year up to 500 on maintenance, which would be above and beyond, that would be actually hard costs as opposed to sending somebody over to, you know, as part of the plowing routine or, you know, the stuff we've already done, so.
That's the town meeting financial piece, which would be an annual approval. The rest of it is stuff that we do as in our normal course of business.
Yeah, I forgot about it. Might just remind me that we did it, so that's good. I'm getting old.
Other questions on this, comments? I mean, it, you know, we tried to bring it back in the form that the board asked to make it a little more official. Dawn and Sally will do the administration, but any changes to the agreement, which was one of the big points, I think, that was made by this board, now has to be done by the two boards. So their board has approved it as it stands, and so now I'm asking.
I'll make a motion to accept the agreement as written. No second to that.
Any further discussion? Further comments from the audience? Anybody? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item under unfinished business is a continuation of something that was brought up in our last meeting. The RSU withdrawal ballot question. Teresa, would you like to catch us up on what's happened in the last month?
Yeah. Doing a lot of thinking. And one, I like to say apologize because I say um a lot, I noticed on the video, and I want to just cut that out of there. I'm like, oh, my gosh. It's annoying. Sorry. All right. After our meeting, I went to a school board meeting that they had, and they had Dick Spencer there, and they were talking about the cost sharing. And I had sent you guys the paperwork that they handed out there about the possibilities of different ways. And since it's an RSU, there's not as many strict guidelines from the state as far as doing the cost sharing formula. And we can have it written in there to have the middle school put completely on Wyndham, if that's so being, but it's a long process, meaning it has to be done now and be voted on everything by April in order to make the July 2015 new budget, is what it is. Sorry, did it again. Since the last meeting, I've also had a lot of conversations with a lot of people. And besides the middle school, the new middle school, there's some big issues that have come up. And one of them that this is not a district. It's still Wyndham, it's still Raymond, and it's not an RSU. The other thing is that Raymond needs more votes on the board, that we, that people wish that they had more say. And the other is the cost sharing is completely and totally unfair. We consolidated it five years ago, and according to the consolidation agreement, they could have looked at, the board could have looked at it after two years and then changed it, updated it, or whatever. And it has not been done. And I really have to seriously ask, would this petition, I mean, would this cost sharing formula even be looked at today if I didn't have a petition?
That memo you sent around?
Mm-hmm.
It says in there, it must be done after five years, which is now.
Yeah.
So it must be done.
Well, but the backup on that, I asked Paula Gravel at the state, and she's the one that suggested the cost sharing. I requested it in March, didn't hear anything back. I asked for an update in May, and I was told that they were going to look at it in June 30th, I think, is their school board meeting. They voted to not do any action on it as of right then. And that's when it's like.
They need to read the consolidation document because it says right in there, you must do it after five years.
Well, they now.
Which is July, was July 1st, 2014 was five years.
And if you look at the minutes of the June meeting, they voted to not take action. But all of a sudden, very coincidentally, it was on the August 13th to start looking at it. And once again, I seriously have to question, would this be done if there wasn't a petition that was being put out there? There has been months of times that there could have been open conversation. I, everybody knew that this was out in January, that I had a petition going around. When I sat, sorry, keep doing it. Sitting at the table with Frank McDermott at the election day, Dawn Davis came through, Jerry King came through, you know, people, come correct me, come talk about it, open the communications. You know, we had Katrina Sangster come in here. I think the most frustrating thing is this last thing, when we asked for a school board meeting, and we've totally been denied. Not denied, ignored. Point blank ignored. And the only time that I have heard anything, and I'm going to put this right out there, is like right before a meeting as to what am I going to say? And that's frustrating, it really is, because I feel that the communication should be open, and it's not. And if you backtrack a little bit on this, on this stuff, the whole consolidation, first it was Jordan Small School, they attempted to close that, and I think Manchester. And then the second attempt was to redistrict kids up here. And stop and think about what Jordan Small is. Right now, we may be penalized when it comes down to the cost sharing because we have less kids, so that means our kids are costing the district more money. But if they would have redistricted and filled our schools up and evened the kids out, we wouldn't be paying a higher share. So this is one of the options that the school board or the new committee is going to look at, is what is the cost per pupil? And in Raymond, it's a lot more money because we have less kids and we're more expensive, is what it is. And, you know, that's one of the things that Dick Spencer had said. The other question is, what repairs have been done to Jordan Small School? We've got a roof that's really bad, we've got a boiler, but wait a second, we've been consolidated five years, all kinds of work's gone on down in Wyndham. In fact, they just started the second pod of the playground at the primary school. And Katrina Sangster, and I went back and reviewed the tape again just to be sure, but when she was here, her comment was on the lines of, when you know which way a building is going to move, then you, you work differently with it long term. And Mike, you and I had a little side joke that, and I looked at you and I said, that means that don't fix a roof if you're not going to use the building. And she says, can I get it any more simple than that, is what it is. So, no, they weren't planning on using Jordan Small. So I think in the long term, it's been a long term plan to close Jordan Small School. So I've been really battening this thing around. And then the final step was to put out there is to do a new consolidated middle school. If we wait this out till they decide as to, I'm sorry, let me back up a step. Through this whole process, as far as doing the cost sharing form, the towns have to vote several times. It's a long process as far as, they have to have the towns vote. Do you think Wyndham's going to vote to take on that cost of that new school? I don't think so. Do you think Wyndham's going to cost to have more taxes on their side instead of our side? I don't think so either. And my concern is, we are going to be back to square one, or maybe even in a worse place, I don't know. So I'm looking at this tonight as, I'm asking for the board to make a motion tonight to put this on the ballot for the November ballot. And we do a formal investigation as far, an official investigation, as to what a divorce would look like, what will our schools look like, what will a 10-year plan look like, what would Raymond citizen control, you know, taking on our own schools look like? We can stop it at any time, but the longer you wait, we can get more, more costs to us, is what it is that's going on down in Wyndham. And I have seriously been thinking and going so many different ways, I've talked to so many different people, and struggling with this. But I think if we start forward, we can always stop. But I think we need to say we're serious about this.
Questions for Teresa? I mean, she threw a lot out there. There's, you know, I know that, I know that prior to her bringing this to us in August, that, you know, I didn't know half what I know now, you know, from talking to people and doing research. And I guess I'm looking to see questions from the board. We have a, we have a school board member here, and we'll take public comment in a minute. But are there questions for Teresa and what she's found? Your questions in your own head or comments?
I'm just frustrated.
Join my world.
It is spelled out in the consolidation document what needs to be done, and I just, like, totally ignoring it.
Yes.
And the Press Herald actually had an editorial today, I don't know if anybody saw it, about consolidation. And the school districts all pulling out of it because a lot of them feel like they're not getting a fair shake.
Unless it's geographically in there, then they feel that's.
Right.
Where this is located.
Right.
So where do you think we honestly would be with this cost sharing plan if I didn't push this? I don't, I think we'd be same path. Let's make a happy little path down the road, and let's not fear off the side.
Has our student population decreased?
No. The, I called, the Jordan Small Middle School has 199 kids, and there's 200 in the Raymond Elementary. And they both, I believe, can hold 350. It is my understanding that they had.
How many kids are going to the high school?
That I don't know. I didn't get that.
So are we, like, 700 kids, 600?
Oh, I don't, yeah, maybe 600. I don't think a whole lot more than that.
Our population has decreased since we consolidated, yet we're paying more money.
Yeah.
So I mean, that, I think that's a fact, and it irks everybody.
Here's something that may irk you even more, sorry. One of the comments was made at the school board meeting, let's take our time and go for the year 2016 and aim for that as far as changing the cost sharing. And that's two years out. So this is, this is just stuff I'm putting on the table that's being discussed. And I'm, like I said, I went to that meeting, I talked to Dick Spencer, he asked where the petition was. And I did say at that meeting, I said, if you're willing to put that school on the back burner, then I'm willing to put the petition on the back burner. But that was the night after our meeting, and nothing, so much has changed as far as, like, just finding out more information. They got an estimate for the roof at Jordan Small School, and they backed out because they felt that it was too expensive. But why put money into a school that they're not going to keep open?
Teresa, if we voted to send this to the town for a vote, and we will do an investigation in the interim?
Oh, there's a lot of work that has to be done.
Okay, that's what I thought. There's a lot of numbers that we have to.
There is.
Solidify. But we can stop it anytime during that, if it's not going in the direction.
The people have to vote because once we start proceeding with the petition, we've had that, then we have to have a four panel, four-person panel. And that panel may say, no, we don't, we're not going to go forward, they cannot. The town has to vote because the town has already voted. So the town is going to have so much say in this each step of the way, is what it is, because there's so many votes that you have to do.
But there are controls in the meantime.
Yes.
Okay.
Sue, could you give us, to the best of your knowledge, I know I'm putting you on the spot here. If, if we vote for this question at this point, it's my understanding, all we're doing is asking the town whether they want to investigate the possibility of withdrawing from the RSU.
No.
No.
It's no, no. No. This, what we have to vote on the ballot is a specific question, petition to withdraw, and how much money we want to put out there, is what it is.
To spend on attorneys.
Yes, historic. You put so much out there, but like I said, we can do as much as possible behind the scenes that we don't need the attorneys right away. But it's got to be a specific petition on the November ballot.
Right. And I read that here somewhere today, what the exact question was, and it's.
It's laid out in statute.
It's laid out in statute what it is. So it's, we're going to vote, if we did it, we would have to choose an amount of money we're willing to expend at this point to investigate it.
Yes.
Whether we spend it or not, or how much we spend is up to us after the question.
Right.
But what the question is asking are, do you want to spend money to move forward in an investigation? And I think, Teresa, that's what you're saying, is that if the town voted whenever to move forward with the investigation, we would have money to spend, you'd put a committee together. And then we have to follow a very strict set of guidelines that are put forth by the state.
Right.
With milestones.
Right.
But they're, based on what I understood this month, is there's no speed attached to those milestones.
No. The only speed that's attached is when we go to the next step, and then I let Sue know as far as saying, okay, this is when we have to another, have another vote. Is that the way you understand it, too?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then there are some dates you need to back up because you need to be, have an election out for so many days for absentee ballots, for instance.
Correct.
And so many days for notice. And there are some time constraints around that. But until you've set the date of when you're having the vote, which is technically a special town meeting, then there aren't any dates yet. And some of them, there are, there's a point where a judge is basically making a determination, and there's no time limit on that.
It's pretty much Sue's timeline as far as when we have the public hearing, public forums, as far as she has to do so many days, in like 45 days, 90 days, whatever, that's the timeline.
And part of my questioning here is, at our last meeting, we asked whether or not it was even possible to get it up for the November election. And we felt comfortable that as long as we did it by the 16th.
The 9th.
The 9th, which was our other, which was next Tuesday, that we could do it. Then it would be a matter of the people would vote to do it or not. If the people vote not to do it, then we're done.
Right.
For now.
Right.
So if the people vote not to do it in November, say, does the petition go away at that point? It does, right? Because we backed it on the petition to send it, you would have to, I mean.
Your obligation to do anything with that petition would be complete.
So then the flip question is, Teresa has a petition, we have 300 and some odd votes, which can call the question. Does that petition expire? I mean, she started it in January, she finished it in June. Is there a rule of thumb for petitions?
Petitions don't have any date where they go stale. There's a reasonableness, though. And that's where MMA is not comfortable saying they never expire because it reaches a point where people could change their minds, they'll have a different outlook, circumstances can change. But that's something that, you know, as a board, would need to decide. And would, do you feel that enough time has gone by so that another petition would be necessary to move it forward or, or to start again possibly?
Is a year out of the question? Are you pushing the envelope at a year? I mean, I'm looking for a gut reaction here.
Well, for the state, for state petitions, it's 18 months.
Okay.
Anything, and any signature over 12 months is considered no good.
So you're looking at.
So that's January.
Right. So we're talking.
You started gathering in January.
Right.
Okay. But I just, it helps me understand what our options are. Thank you. Lonnie, you get that look on your face? Sorry.
I mean, I'm all for the petition, I'm all for the vote, just curious to know what we're looking at money-wise, to set aside what we feel that we would need to investigate. Really, the only question I have left about it.
And that's, that's the million dollar question. But what happens is.
But you should highball it. Because you don't need it. If you don't.
Right.
But if you don't have it, then you're pretty much in the, dead in the water if your money runs out and you.
Because Joe made a good point. You could put a certain amount, you could always come back and ask for more. The people in Dixfield, I think it is, were told 50,000, but they used 7,000, 8,000, is what it is. I have some great people that are willing to help out as far as, you know, we have to have a four-panel committee, but that doesn't mean you have, you can't have the bigger committee behind helping and doing the budgeting and stuff like that, is what it is. And.
Is the board okay with me opening up to the public at this point, just so that we can hear some other comments?
As much information as possible.
Anybody from the public want to speak to this? Frank?
Frank McDermott, McDermott Road. I would urge the board to go forward with this. I think the answer you got from the RSU board sent you a message. As Teresa said, we can start this, and if by some miracle, they decide that they're going to start sending some Wyndham kids to Raymond and that they're going to change the revenue sharing, it would be wonderful if we could call an end to it. Although there are some other questions I think we need to look at at the same time as we're doing our investigation. But I would just urge you to vote tonight to move it forward and put it on the ballot for November. Thank you.
Yeah, yes.
I assume you want to.
Of course I do.
Diana Froesland, Daggett Drive, school board member. So I'll speak as a school board member first. I need to make some corrections because there was a lot of misinformation, which is very irresponsible in a public forum, making it sound like for some reason, we swept that under the rug. It's legal that we have to look at that by the fifth year. So no, we can't just pretend it doesn't exist. We legally have to do that. And as we came out of the bus, budget session, it's a very busy time of year, and the facilities, that middle school facilities committee was also trying to wrap up at the end of the season. So to make it sound like somebody was trying to put that aside, we legally have to review that. Because it was coming up to June, and we weren't going to be sitting down in June, reviewing it in June, when you were there and heard Dick Spencer, it was going to take several months. So we had to vote on it, and we voted to keep it as is because you can't vote to do nothing, agreeing that we would pick it up ASAP when we started. We don't meet in the summer, we just had one meeting in August, and that was the first item that we need to talk about. We meet tomorrow night, that committee has already been formed. We agree that we should follow the timeline that Dick set out. We agree that we should follow the timeline that Dick set out. And if we stick to that, it actually would be done in a couple of months because of the same, same issues. You have to have referendums and votes and-
Doesn't change it.
So he set actually a very realistic timeline. Yes, it'll take months, as would this take months. But to say that it seemed like we were not doing our job or following the law, well, yes, we were. So that kind of irks me a little bit, to be honest. And as far as nobody responding, we had talked about a meeting and I communicated, I was on vacation, other people on vacation. Like I said, we even just met once in August. And that was right after this meeting, as we're going to meet tomorrow. So yes, there was communication and I don't know if there's been any further since the last email I received. So nobody ignored you at all?
Diana, I can speak to that and I know you've got more to say. This board, separate of Teresa, requested from you to take back to the school board and try to get a meeting before our next meeting, which is tonight. You knew, you knew the dates.
Right, and I spoke to Marge.
At that time. And we got a correspondence last Thursday afternoon at 3:30, asking us, excuse me, asking us what the meeting agenda would be, understanding also that Friday was a day off from school. It was 3:30 in the afternoon on Thursday when we got a correspondence. There was no correspondence, no acknowledgement of our request until that time. So that leaves this board feeling ignored for an entire process that you folks met the next night. So from my standpoint, I feel ignored. All right? As an official request from our board to you, Marge may have dropped the ball, somebody dropped the ball, if, whatever it is, that's the feeling that has been left on this board because we officially asked for it by this meeting. And we got nothing until the Thursday before Labor Day weekend when nothing could happen. So that's one of the reasons I think you're hearing frustration up here and feeling-
Have you since been in touch with her to tell her what you wanted on the agenda?
It's, it's gone by. Okay, the, the, had that meeting been set up, had there been communication prior to last Thursday before a holiday weekend, the board might feel differently tonight. We have to act tonight to get this on a November ballot. We don't have another choice if that's going to be our rationale. With no correspondence to this board, we couldn't do anything either at 3:30 on Thursday afternoon. So our hands are tied in that respect and it leaves us feeling, I'm honestly just respected, that it didn't matter. And I understand what the board voted for, which was to put the middle school discussion aside and to bring up the, the revenue sharing. But we had hoped to just have a sit-down conversation and, and talk face-to-face and, so I think that's part of our frustration tonight is we have to act and we don't have any information from, from March and however that happened. And so unfortunately, you, you get the message and you get to bring it back on our frustration on that. But I'm, I just wanted to make that clear on how I felt about it, getting it Thursday afternoon. So thank you for being patient with me.
Yeah. Okay, switch hats to citizen. I'm kind of frustrated just sitting here listening because I don't feel that you seem to have a plan. You know, have you put together a mock budget so that we know what it'll cost if it goes through? Because I've had a lot of citizen comments and emails and contacts too, and the people that I've spoken to have said, but what if it costs so much more? Can we, has anybody looked at that? Has anybody run budgets? Have you presented us with any numbers? I've not heard a thing. So if we go and vote on this in November, do people understand what they're voting about? Do they know what it's going to cost? Is there going to be a figure so that you can say, okay, if we now are going to run it again ourselves, which you did, now it's going to be 11 million? Will people, and then you can say, and your taxes are going to increase by this amount. Will people be fully informed of what they're being asked? Because from the citizens I've spoken to, they don't really feel informed as to, you know, it seems like it's become more of, it started as more of an emotional situation all about the middle school construction, which is even on hold as we speak. That's not it. Like I said, that wrapped up in June and they've not even met since because now our focus is going to be on the cost-sharing formula. So that middle school facilities committee hasn't even met since they wrapped up in June. And that was left, that they should do a referendum. There was steps, still further steps that they intended to take. So as a citizen, I'm frustrated too, saying, I don't know that my fellow citizens are going to feel like they, they know what they're being asked. Do they have full information? Or is it simply going to be a question? And if you already know what the question looks like, is, is it just a yes or no? Do you want to stay in the RSU or not?
No. And as far as-
Not why not?
There's, there's a petition and I think as a school board member, knowing that this petition's out there, I think that this, this should have been looked at, to be honest. It's, it, we've already mentioned that this is a step-by-step process, that it's an investigation we have to work through. We have to do a panel, we have to put together a budget. This doesn't lock people in, this just moves a step forward like we just mentioned earlier, that this is an investigation as far as going, looking forward as to what the district would look like separated. I, as a citizen and a selectman, am totally disgusted at the fact that we're paying 45% when we have such low numbers and we're not getting any answers from our representation on the Raymond School Board. So I'm right there with you as far as the citizen goes. But it's an investigation that we start now. Alls you're doing is that, alls we're doing is asking them, do we want to proceed with the petition for withdrawal and, and spend so much money is what it is. It's not asking to withdraw. Diana, you called me the night before we had our last meeting and you thought we were voting right then and there as to withdrawing and this board was going to vote. Don't hear from you the whole month. Thursday night, Thursday afternoon, I hear from you with a phone call. And you said, and I asked you, what's up? And, and you said, well, I just want to know what you're going to say. And I said, what about the meeting? And you said, you felt the meeting was moot because it was put on the back burner. And I said, no, the select board still wants to meet. So the only time any communication is, is to hear what I'm going to say as far as the select board goes, as far as the selectmen goes. As far as the petition goes, and if I was on the school board personally, I think I would be educating myself as much as possible as far as this whole withdrawal process. I don't know all the answers. I always, and I've said from the beginning, I don't know the answers to this. But I'm willing to go through this because I think this is completely and totally unfair to the citizens of Raymond to be paying this much money and the school board not speaking up and doing something about it. And as far as the summer, the budget and everything else goes, everything you just mentioned kind of makes it how important Raymond is as far as that list goes, as far as getting to that cost-sharing plan. That's just my personal opinion.
Teresa, I, I did find Sue included the steps in our minutes on what it would be for a vote. So our minutes from our last meeting. So you can get those online. I'm guessing we approved them today, they'll be online this week.
Okay.
So the steps to, to, to get to ballot, what's been completed is, is the signatures. Sam, please? What's been completed is the signatures. The next step is what we're discussing tonight, which is whether or not to move it to the ballot and when to move it to the ballot, if, if we're going to. Okay? If we were to vote tonight to put it to the, to the ballot, Sue by the 9th would have to get information for the printing of the ballots. We would have to by October 5th have notice of the public hearing for the question. And the question at the ballot would be as follows, and this is in ordinance as Sue mentioned earlier. Hold a special town meeting election to secret vote, which is by ballot, on whether or not to officially start the withdrawal process. The article would need to read as follows. Do you favor a, do you favor filing a petition for withdrawal with the Board of Directors of Regional School Unit RSU 14 and with the Commissioner of Education authorizing the withdrawal committee to expend, insert dollar amount, and authorizing the municipal officers, select persons, town council, et cetera, to issue notes in the name of the town of Raymond or otherwise pledge the credit of the town of Raymond in an amount not to exceed, again, the dollar amount for this purpose? So all the question is going to ask is, is the town willing to put forth, say, $40,000 of investigative costs? I think to then go directly to your question, which we don't know, what would a budget be?
Okay.
What would a 10-year plan look like? What would, you know, the, the cost? My gut tells me it's not going to be cheaper. So it's going to come down, I think, to a question of control and what does a 10-year plan look like versus it being cheaper? It's possible that with a new grid system, that it might look cheaper than the 45% model. I don't know. But I, those are questions to be answered after the referendum, I think. That's when the committee gets to work, has some money for some legal advice, some accounting advice, I assume, and to dig into the budget and, and answer those questions. So I don't think in November or June, if that was when it was, that we would have the answers to your questions because I, we don't know. I mean, a committee's going to have to be formed as, as anything else to investigate something. So that's what I know about the process at this point. And, and this is spelled out very nicely by Sue. So when it's online or, or actually, we've got, Dawn, can you forward that to Diana? Or, or Sue, can some, can somebody forward it to her so, so you have it? And that would be just the minutes or this chart, maybe Sue or something? That would be great.
Because I left that other meeting early, so I never did hear what the wrap-up was.
Yeah, yeah, we, we just, this was just Sue, Sue made it easy for us to be able to find it and I, I just dug for it. So that, that should answer your question to the best I can answer it.
No, thank you. Thank you. Did you have anything else you needed me to convey because our meeting tomorrow?
No, do you have any other questions for us or, or comments that, I mean, we, we're still discussing, so, Dawn?
I did speak with the superintendent today and he was, seemed somewhat unaware of the whole, what was going on with the request of the meeting and so forth. So he attributed it to what he thought was a miscommunication or a, a lack of understanding between the parties. So I just wanted to point that out. He, he was not, didn't, did not seem anyway aware of the request. So he just thought that something got, you know, miscommunicated.
Thank you, Dawn. Joe?
I, I'm willing to, to wait until after tomorrow night to hear what happens. You know, I don't know what the numbers are. I mean, all I know is we're spending 8.6 million for six or 650 kids in Raymond. If we go on our own, is it going to cost more? More than likely, yes, because you still have tuition, you're still going to have, you know, heat maintenance, yeah.
Facilities, which we're still going to have to deal with.
Yeah, I mean, so I don't know what the number is. But maybe it was a miscommunication. I'm willing to give you the benefit of the doubt. But I think it's-
And I was away, which I clearly, because I initially got a contact from Danielle and apologized that I had been on vacation.
Well, the board did ask when you left the meeting.
No, I know.
I sent a follow-up, just to be courteous.
Right, and I contacted Marge because I didn't know what the proper protocol was. I didn't know if Mike was supposed to contact Marge. Of course I spoke to her right away.
Yeah.
But, you know, so if you can come, at least send us an email after tomorrow night's meeting and just say, okay, we're going to have a meeting set up and they're interested to hear what you say. If they have no interest in meeting with us, that's-
But see, that's not the case. You paint it entirely different. Marge was just, as the chair, she was asking, do you know what their questions are so that we can come prepared?
Well, I mean, I-
What are their questions so that she can get it? Because she needs time to get it on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's a makeup of the cost-share formula, I think is what we have a problem with.
Which-
It's been, it's been on the books for five years. You could have reviewed it after two. They, Wyndham has no interest in reviewing it because they're going to end up paying more.
And I have no idea why it wasn't reviewed. I'm new to that.
But if you read the document that consolidated, it must be done after five.
Right, it must. That's why I'm saying. You were insinuating that somehow we just ignored it, but that's not the case. Legally, it has to-
I didn't insinuate anything. I said, the document says it must be done.
Right. That was fully known.
Yeah, okay.
So that's why that was the very first item on our new year here, if you will. You know what I mean? Because we did not, we don't meet in July and we just had that very, that one meeting right after I was here. It's the same, our meetings are on the same as yours, first and third. So, and that committee's formed.
We looking to have a, a special meeting?
See, that's what I'm saying, what's-
To be able to discuss once we see what happens tomorrow night. Because, just because we only meet on the first or second Tuesday of every month, this is a very important issue. We should, we should meet earlier than that. We shouldn't wait another month.
We're meeting on the 16th again.
Okay. If we voted tonight and then the numbers turned up not to our liking or somewhat different than when we're moving forward, I'm based upon, we can always stop it.
Now, what we would vote on tonight is whether or not we want us to go to town. So we wouldn't have, you then form the committee to review all the numbers. So, I mean, you're looking at months away. But I'm still, I don't know, I'm just not there yet.
I, um, I've talked to folks and, and I think much like you, when I talk to the folks in town, you know, they're reading it in the local paper, right? And they're, they're hearing about stuff this way because it's not on our radar. You know, as a select board member, this is not, you know, that's your gig, you know? And, and we're, we're kind of happy about it. But now that stuff has been brought to light and it's been brought to the board, we now have to get into it, which is, which is fine. You know, Teresa has brought it up, she's been asking questions. But I, I don't know if you were on the board back in, in 2012. I'm not sure how the, the terms are, but I actually spoke to the board. I put together a, a short thing about what I called us and them. And I wrote it in, in November of, of 12 and, and addressed the board in this, in this room. And I, I don't know if it was the, I think it was probably the December, first of December meeting that year, about what, I think, Teresa, you started with the us and them, the fact that we still have Roadrunners and Eagles, the fact that we still have Jordan Small Middle School here, which is fine, right? But across the street, you have Raymond Elementary. It shouldn't be Raymond Elementary. It should be another name because we're an RSU. When you look at Rumford in Mexico, when they joined, they became Mountain Valley. It wasn't Rumford, Mexico, or Mexico, Rumford. And, you know, five years later, one of the things that I talk about in here is change is generational. And it's very hard in the early stages to create that synergy. You know, we, we've heard it from the folks who didn't want to be redistricted up here. You know, we, we heard it from the folks here worried about the, the elementary school being too short for the middle schoolers, you know, and all the construction costs and, but had we done that back in 2010 and we closed our middle school, which was the proposal, I think adding sixth grade, so we would have shipped only, then there would be even more overcrowding in, in the middle school in Wyndham because Wyndham has grown more than they anticipated. And I think when you get to our numbers, we have shrunk a little faster. So there haven't been opportunities. But the one thing that I, I do feel is that we are not an RSU. We're still Wyndham Raymond. It's still us and them. And this is a perfect example of you're caught as one of three, right? You're one of three, which is three of nine. And so you've got to figure out coalitions. So you, as a Raymond representative, if you can propose anything, but if Wyndham doesn't go with it, you're, you're stuck in the water. I'm of the opinion that doing this, because if, if we're going to do it with our own money and try to save money, this is going to be a very slow process. And that the school board has to do their process to what's right for the students. We have to look at what is right for Raymond. We, whatever comes out of the investigation, we don't ever have to actually call the question to withdraw if the numbers come as unfavorable to a tax rate. And, you know, the middle school committee may come up with the right recommendations- may come up with the right recommendations that everybody likes and, I mean, it, you know, a lot of things can change. But if we wait another six months, November to June, then we're that much further behind of getting our questions answered. And I think at this point, what you're asking, Teresa, is us to do an investigation about questions more than I think it's a, than it's a direct question about withdraw now.
Right.
I, I just, I don't feel it is withdraw now. I feel it's do the investigation.
Officially doing the investigation.
And it's, and it's information. And I.
That's the process.
I guess I, I would, I would feel comfortable doing that because it's information and it's maybe a little more official from a capacity standpoint. I am currently in favor of the RSU. I voted for it. I think it's been good for the towns and I think especially as our population diminishes, that the opportunities that, you know, an RSU of larger capacity gives us is great. But we may not find that that's the answer after the investigation. But that's where my head's at. But I'm willing to say, you know, let's put away, let's put aside thirty thousand of selectmen contingent to start the investigation, understanding that we only have so much contingency to spend. And given the numbers that you've found research-wise, what other communities have spent, that's probably a very realistic number if we do the work ourselves and we've, you've got volunteers that have, I think, come forward, that have some financial backgrounds, some school background to help your committee. I just think it would answer questions. And, and I don't, I don't see it as an insult or, or anything to the RSU. I just see it as a, is this right for Raymond and do the investigation? So that, that's where I sit. Anybody else? Comments, questions?
Frank McDermott here, McDermott Road. I'd like to echo some of the sentiments that Mike brought up this evening. If I was the superintendent of schools in this SRU, I can remember a few things about that position. In January, when word got to me that there was a petition to withdraw or to at least start the process for withdrawal, I would have spent some time educating my board as to what it entails and look at some of the alternatives that might be off it to shut circuit it. So we went from January to August, now into September, and not a word. I don't think the board has ever had a discussion as to what the withdrawal actually means or how the process works. For some reason, a lot of them believe that the vote in November will dissolve the RSU. What the vote in November does is create a committee that will investigate what a budget would look like, how much it would cost to run the system. It's a, it's a year's process. It's not a complete cutoff the day after the election. But I think the board and I think the administration has done a poor job of educating itself or even considering that this might actually happen. They've had seven months. And the most you hear is, well, what do you want to talk about? If it sounds good to us, we might meet. That's not the way you treat people who have questions and concerns. I would urge you to vote this to put on, on the ballot in November.
Mike?
Teresa?
Just to be completely, totally honest, I don't even know what we would be paying for as far as the money goes yet. Because I figure most of the work that we're going to be doing in the background is putting together, you know, a budget as far as, you know, I found the other night on like four years rate in a row what the RSU is. I've got the beforehand that somebody had done for me, what we were with Raymond and then the current budget. And I got some great people that are willing to do that. I think what I was thinking as far as attorneys goes, if, if it gets to that point, is more negotiations down the line, you know what I mean, for property. But I wouldn't even know, I wouldn't, you wouldn't use any money during this investigation. Do you know what I mean? We're just trying to get numbers to see. It's, it's once again, like when I brought to you guys in August, what it would cost for a forty million dollar home, a forty million dollar budget on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. It's kind of like that again, where we're finding a budget to see how much it's going to cost the taxpayers of Raymond and what we need. And, and that's it. But it's, but it's doing it officially because I, I think we're at that point. And like Frank just said, it's been since January. And once the petition got out there, the name of the petition got out there, word got out quick. And I, I didn't jump into this thing real quick either. You know, there's been correspondence, there's been, you know, I've been questioning a lot of things and, and as you guys know, I've been updating people at the board meetings on this whole process. So I haven't jumped into this thing blind. And I don't, I don't feel it's premature. I feel like what we're doing right now at this step is we're just taking a step, an official step forward to say, okay, we're really going to look at how this is going to impact the taxpayers of Raymond and the families of Raymond, is what it is.
You're doing due diligence.
Yeah. And I don't have the answers. And every time I think of doing this, honestly, like I told Mike, it's too much stomach, but it's, it's, once you get it and you start looking, you're going, oh, I didn't know that. It's seriously an education process. It's a long process. But I've got some good people that are willing to help. I look at Frank because I'm going to keep him here for the winter. But it's, it's, and I think that was the shock question when Diana had asked me, she thought that we were coming to the board and voting right away that night. And I said, no, no, this is a huge process. And, and it's, it's making this a district, but it's taking it to the public and let the public, this is, this is the one big time they're going to have a say. And we're going to know in November. If we vote tonight to go in November, people are going to tell us whether they want to go forward with this or not. And I think we ought to give them the opportunity. I'm, I'm willing, I'm willing to do the work. My husband's even backing me up on this one, so.
Sam? Any comments?
No, I think she said it. I think this is the beginning of something. If we are not committed to it once it gets going. I mean, if we, if the numbers don't crunch correctly, then.
Then we can pull out.
Then that's it. It's, so, you know, this is not as if we're voting for something that's going to, you know, it's not a car headed for the cliff that we can't stop.
I, I do want to reiterate, it's, I, I don't think this process is just about the money.
I know.
I mean, it is, it is a process. It is what is, what is our town going to look like and what are our kids going to get for services, I think, is, is important. There has to be a balance there and, and I know it will be. And I think that's what's important about a process that looks out ten years and tries to make some, some predictions on, on population and things of that nature. Lonnie, you have any on it? Joe, last words?
I, I highly recommend you all read the Press Herald editorial today. I never agree with the Press Herald, okay? Ever, ever. I hate the paper. I think it's a terrible newspaper. But their editorial was right on.
They still read it.
I still read it. I mean, it's the only game in town, pretty much. But it's, it's the frustration of these small towns that is getting people riled up to, to get out of the RSUs. But their point is that getting out of those RSUs doesn't actually mean that it's going to be a cost savings to the town. And I think that's the important part. You won't know until you actually explore it. But as Raymond's student population shrinks, it's going to be more expensive. It's going to be more expensive to educate these kids than if we stay as an RSU. That's just my guess. I am willing to give the school board one more day. I, I just am to meet and come back and say, okay, we want to meet with you and talk about your issues. I, I won't be voting to proceed right now. I just, I think I can wait one more day and get a message back on, on Thursday that says, all right, well, here's the meeting date. No. So I'm, I'm not ready to jump into this now yet.
Can I?
I'll answer. Sue? Sue?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry. You were busy and I was interrupting. Sixteenth, too late?
The sixteenth would be too late to get electronic ballots. We would have to hand count the question. It would also mean that, because if I don't tell the state by this Friday that what's going to be on our notice of election, which is a list of everything, will be voted on Election Day, then we won't be able to process the absentee ballots the day prior to Election Day. We'll have to process them during the day on Election Day and after eight o'clock at night. It just makes a longer day for the workers. As a convenience.
So, hold on, Joe. So, understanding Raymond, it's only been in the last couple of years that we've had a, what I would call a local option vote that we could use on the electronic thing. I mean, we, we have hand counting all the time. And I know that's harder on the workers. I know this is going to be where it's a gubernatorial election. But this would be the only question that would be hand counted, correct?
No, any write-in votes are also hand counted. So if there are any state write-in vote.
But, but that would happen anyway.
Yeah, that's going to happen anyway.
But you're not counting governors. This doesn't preclude us from having an electronic ballot for the governor's race and the representatives. This would only be a single issue.
Right. If you, if, but if you don't decide that this is going to be on the ballot tonight, that means on top of every, all the people that come in to vote on Election Day will also need to be processing absentee ballots on Election Day.
But can't you hold a local advisory vote? Not, not a formal process, but the select board are asking, should the Town of Raymond explore, you know, whether or not to remove itself from RSU fourteen?
The select board can put any question before the voters they want to.
Right.
At a special town meeting, and that would be a special town meeting.
Right. So you could have that. It doesn't have to be formal, saying that you want thirty thousand dollars to explore the possibility. You could just ask for an advisory opinion.
Yes. You can do that. That delays any other proceedings.
Right, but you could have a special town meeting down the road.
Yes.
Depending on what the advisory vote is.
There are costs to special town meetings.
Right. But, but it could be done.
Yes.
It could be done in June at the ballot box.
Yes.
Okay. What is, what races are in June?
Eleven.
Next June, there may be bond issues if they exist from the state. There may not be a state election. They won't know that until probably March, April timeframe.
You have a selectmen.
But we'll have municipal elections.
Check this out.
I guess.
Maybe.
So, I, I understand what Joe is, is saying. I guess I'm, I would much rather have this decided by a gubernatorial election than a local election for getting the people out personally from a, from a numbers standpoint. You're talking about the difference of six hundred people or seven hundred versus, versus maybe three thousand or twenty-five hundred or something. I'm going to make a motion to put this on the ballot in November with a financial number of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Further discussion? Teresa?
Joe, I'm just curious to ask you this. You've talked to Katrina once. We've asked for another board meeting. What would be said tomorrow night that would, that would change your mind? I do know that they.
That they want to meet with us. That's all I want, is a meeting.
Well.
Just to hear what they're thinking as, as a school committee. Why haven't they looked at cost sharing? Now they know they have to. And what road are they going to go down?
I don't think they have an answer to that.
Well.
Do you know what I mean?
I'm willing to talk it over. I don't know what their answer's going to be.
No, I just, just was curious as to what.
Lonnie?
At this point, we're looking to pass the motion. And if it passes, in that interim, we won't necessarily spend any money by the time we get to the next meeting in two weeks. We can have another motion and put a cap.
Well, no, you've got to oil the balance. You've got to oil the balance. So there's a cost to that.
The, um, if this goes full, we start the process, there's an election in, in November, it would be no different than any other election where I'm sure people would be on both sides of the issue and have questions and there'd be lawn signs and, and that whole, whole discussion potentially, or maybe not. Maybe there's, maybe there is no interest and we'll know fairly quickly.
You've got to find the cause of that.
And I do think that it will tell us a lot. It'll be.
I agree.
You know, if, if you've got, you know, twenty-five hundred or three thousand people voting and you get a, a two thousand, one thousand split, it tells you something. You get a fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred split, tells you something also. But I guess.
What's going to happen is when we set the bill rate in two weeks and we see the impact on that school budget on our bill rate, that will get people around that.
But I, I don't think it's our responsibility as five people to make this decision for the town. I think the town needs to make this decision. I really do. I think they need to have this say whether, and they may say no.
They have no choice if we don't put it on the ballot.
Right. But we're taking the choice out of their hands. So this, this is putting it out there. And you know what? And, and people hear things from different people, you know, and, and we'll see. And meanwhile, it's educating them as much as what we get educated as we can. And, but I think it's, I think it's fair we take it to the people. I really do. I don't think it's fair that a board says yea or nay. I think we need to take it to the public.
I think the board's saying yea.
We are, we are if we don't put it out to the board to vote whether to go. But, but on the other hand.
I'm fine with putting that out, right? I'm also fine with giving the school committee one day to get back to us.
We gave them a month.
Yeah, in the middle of August, in the middle of.
And, and an email.
Look.
I'm just saying.
I'd rather not meet in July and August than August.
I know, we've already heard that, Joe.
So, okay, so I'm willing to cut it.
Okay.
Just a second. Go ahead and think about it.
Any further? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Four to one? Thank you all. Danielle, tax required property update, please.
Okay, so back at your April meeting, you voted to look at Cox, Lewis, Moore, Reed, Ruddball, Square J, Thorne, and Vow and that they would get thirty days extensions and that we would proceed with all land and then come back with any buildings. So what happened is in your e-packet, you'll see that Cox, Lewis, Reed, Thorne, Thorne, and Vow all came up with payment arrangements and that Moore, Ruddball, and Square J did not have any sort of correspondence, like did not make contact with us all. And Ruddball is residential land. So I took Moore and Square J and forwarded them to the Conservation Commission to see if there was any sort of retention value. And you'll see in your e-packet that there was, is an email from the chairman of the Conservation Commission. And he says to put them out to sale to try to get as close to market value as possible. So with that said, basically, I'm here to sort of get some direction from you folks as to where you would like to head. And, you know, we do have two other property, no, three other properties that, no, two other properties. Zero Boulder Road and Zero Bond Street that we weren't able to get sold off at the last tax required property sale as well. So basically, you know, we have other properties in lieu as well.
Can I ask a question?
Go right ahead.
Is that one, isn't that one of the properties that we, somebody bid on one of those?
Yes.
And that we didn't, said it wasn't enough or something like that?
Correct. That's Bond Street.
Okay.
And we, I have had more interest, more people have come forward about Boulder.
Now Boulder, we had an offer and they never followed through? Didn't we accept an offer on Boulder and someone didn't follow through?
No, everybody who we, we got viable bids on have been good on them.
I thought somebody bid on Boulder.
No. Boulder, Boulder is like this little weird sliver, you know what I mean? Just kind of out in the middle of nowhere that has no actual billable value. But people have come forward and they're interested because, to try to alleviate squatters or it does have some camping potential with water access. So there's those. Basically, and I, oh, and one other one I wanted to, that I realized didn't get brought up at the last one, was Noon. up at the last one, was Noonan was a kind of a big property for you folks because they're, I think, in arrears 24,000. We cannot move forward on that property because they have filed for bankruptcy, but they have come in and made a payment arrangement of $800 a month. So even though, you know, they didn't have to, they are doing that, but that will more than likely get settled out by the courts.
Okay. These folks that came forward and created new payment plans to get them under the five year window, so far so good, that you know of?
That I know of, yes. And I, I don't know how, like how this factors in with their current taxes that will become due in October, which I don't think that it does.
Well, we'll see what happens. Other questions for Danielle? One of the obvious questions that comes forward here is that we have for the first time on our list a residential property.
Anyone living there?
Yes. And Chris is driven by and they're not accepting the certified mail. But the only other step is possibly try to have them serve, but there is a residential property in use.
That's 13 acres?
Twenty-one.
All right.
So that's, that's something we haven't, so I'd like to look at these three properties in two batches. And, and I think the land question is fairly easy. The Moore and the Square J that we asked Danielle to move forward, add it to the two other properties that we tried to auction off or, or, you know, bid off last time. I guess auction is the right word. Add it to, to those. And then I'd like to talk about how we handle residential.
I'll make a motion to put the Moore and the Square J property through the tax-acquired property procedure.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Thank you.
So does that need to move towards sale? Because I've already, all right.
Does that include the prior properties as well or...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. So that's four properties. So the residents, with folks living in it, this is something we talked about when we updated our policies and decided to get more aggressive. They're not accepting certified mail. I'm guessing if they're in arrears as far as they are, that we're not the only one they're not accepting certified mail from. Is it prudent to serve them?
Yes. To me, to me, we should do everything that we can do to notify, even help, in which to me, putting them on a payment plan is helping them, you know, get through and not getting kicked out of their home or their rental or whatever the case may be. So in my view, yes, we should, we should serve them.
Anybody who ignores the municipality or the IRS by saying, I'm not going to take those letters, they're, they're making a bad decision because we need to proceed.
Maybe they are not accepting because they aren't Redball, they're just a renter or just something. So they're like, I'm not getting into the role of that. That's, that's chaos or...
So do you have a sheriff phone knocking on the door to find out the situation? Is that what the...
There are people who serve.
Like, possibly, yeah.
If you want to take... I, I think, given that it's residential property and it's an unusual thing for us, a first, I guess, to me, to the compassionate thing to do and assuming that the folks that are in residence are also the owners, would be to serve them, to spend the extra money, to give them a date certain to come up with the arrangements, the payment arrangements that were requested via certified mail. If absent that, I would proceed with the policy and be done with it. Danielle?
What if we find that it's just renters and not the taxpayer that we're serving?
Find out who they, you find out who they're paying their rent to.
Do we want to hold off on the sale of the other four for one month?
Not as long.
While we investigate and have this come back to the agenda?
That'd be the thing to do.
Folks okay with that? All right. So Danielle, you have the vote on the two lands and you follow through and report back to us in a month, please. Um, next item on the agenda is public comment. Anybody like to address the board on any issue?
Sky.
Seeing none, I'll move on to the next item. Selectmen comment? Folks? Comments?
Nope. I've been all my comments.
I have a library update.
Nice.
Huh? That's part of my, part of my job. This month, the fundraising continues, the book sale is over, but the capital campaign is still going. For anybody who could help out, their, their goal is steep and, and they are running the capital campaign. I do have, this month, I just wanted to highlight some of the agenda, some of their scheduling items. Tomorrow night, Wednesday, September 3rd, main authors John Ford Senior and Mark Nickerson will be there speaking on their respective books. On Monday, the 8th, beginner sock knitting class from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There's adult ed classes now going on at the library and you can see the series of adult ed classes that will be taught down there. One of them is being taught by Professor Gifford at the library. So I want to thank you for doing a local adult ed for, for local folks, Sam. One of the adult ed classes is understanding your mobile devices. That's on September 24th.
Is that one Sam's teaching?
It's what Joe does.
I couldn't teach that.
You couldn't teach that. And Wednesday, October 1st, author Alice Oldford, I believe is how you say it, will speak at the library about her book. So I encourage you to go on the, the library website and check out what's going on down at our Village Library. Don?
Okay. I told Sam this would be 30 seconds, so I'll do my best on this. Confirm the date for the next meeting. The next regular meeting will be October 14th, if that works for you all.
Anybody?
We're still on the 16th, it's seven, right?
That's, I'm sure Don's going to say that next.
That's next, right. I took, took them out of sequence because it says confirm date for next regular meeting.
Oh, all right. Sorry, Joe.
So October 14th is our next regularly scheduled board meeting?
All right. Now, we have scheduled tentatively, I, I think we've all agreed, that we'll have a meeting on September 16th, a special town meeting to set the tax rate with our assessor's agent Kurt Lebel.
That's two weeks from tonight. Don, you will not be at that meeting?
I will not be at the meeting because I'll be at the ICMA conference. So I'll, I'll, I guess I could livestream it perhaps, but I will not be here.
We'll tell you what we do. You'll find out later.
Right.
Lucky you.
I'm sure Danielle will probably text me or something, so I'll find out. And Danielle will be covering that because Sue is at a, a conference, I think, locally conference for the clerks. So thank you, Danielle. And that's all I have. Don't you want me to say something more?
Wow.
Pretty short, huh?
Lonnie?
I'd like to make a motion to accept payroll expense summary dated 9/2/2014 for the amount of $89,638.57.
Second.
County tax. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Teresa, you want to say something?
Nope. I'm asking, looking through the paper.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I just saw that question look on your face.
Nope, I went to paper. Wanted to...
Genetic.
What else you got, Lonnie?
Make a motion to accept treasurer's warrant dated 9/2/2014 for the amount of $177,316.49.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Also coming down, the, the signature is the county tax payment, which is due by the end of the month as is normally done. We will pay that at the last possible date.
Can we be nice to Kurt at the next meeting, too?
What fun is that?
Yeah, no, the poor, the poor look of the guy last time. I was like, what?
Anybody got anything else? Last chance.
No, I also, I had a copy of this agreement for Raymond Village Library and the Town of Raymond, and I just had everyone sign my copy.
Excellent. Thank you, Lonnie.
So efficient. How should I adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you all. I noticed that's signed, you're green.